alrighty so um let me make sure my audio is on and if people are joining in okay so just waiting for more people to join in alright so two people according to this is in if you guys are hearing me tell me if my live stream is doing okay uh what's up Drew can you hear me everything's good everything straight um how is everything the audio seems good uh it's stuff lagging cuz I had to like change my audio for like or my internet settings for like every twenty to ten seconds cuz I don't know everything's straight everything's good okay cool 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 alright so I'm just gonna get started hopefully it won't messed up again because I've been trying to do this for an hour and I wasted kind of a lot of time on this but um today uh is live stream hey Jinx today's live stream I'm going to be just messing around with some uh spaces and I'm going to be trying to restore original content for the fever arena entrance so we recently got this uh space due to one of somebody donating cash into our server and I'm very thankful for this since I've been dying to have this base um in our collection so we could use this not only for the online content server but for online um let me just make sure the audio won't freaking come over okay so right here I recently just added this uh fever arena 2010 um like little world cup top ten like uh you know players of the year or whatever for the actual series and um what you might call it oh did the live stream mess up alright that's weird I don't know cuz I know on my end um it just keeps freezing I'm not even sure cuz it's not even like live hold on let me see if it's doing anything for me I'm not even sure if you guys could still hear me because I know it's like lagging on my end very bad so hold on let me see I think now it should be straight I'm not even too sure this is kinda annoying I just wanna make sure before I like start doing this and like you know okay everything alright for like the thirtieth time so my goal is trying to like restore some pictures and like original content for this space in particular so far I really haven't done anything other than just add uh these two posters right here um I got this from cash data and I added the other poster via right here so alright so that's good I'm trying to add more uh content via from here so I'm planning on adding a poster via right here adding another one via right here um I'm not too sure I think this was probably a poster right here but I gotta figure out how I could get this displayed um but we're just gonna be playing around with stuff there's a lot of posters in this space that I need to try to fill and just add screen links like one right here um think I'm not too sure okay there's two right there so I just gotta like count before doing this so what I'm going to do right now is trying to add some content so the poster I'm gonna be trying to fix or work on is probably this middle one here I'm just going to uh go on my desktop real quick and um what I'll do is is probably a I'll just oh not this I'm just gonna try to show my display so you could kinda see like the inner workings of this maybe on the side alright that's pretty good okay so what I'm going to do my desktop is really messy but I'm going to uh start with me trying to figure out the original folder I've been uh working on so let me see okay this is where I've been working at and this is just you can see some of the images I've been trying to play around with um and then I have my scripts here or basically some XML that I need to replace with the original content just to add some screen links and stuff like that so via right here uh well already know these two were for upstairs this I'm not too sure but what I like to do before starting on anything important is try to use like dummy like pictures before doing anything so uh what I'm gonna do is reload the scene itself and then I'm going to see if my picture will pop up in the middle screen view right now for some reason in the offline client I can't add like a bunch of videos into certain spaces due to like memory issues and Jinx could vouch for me for that alright so yeah so this one right here is actually the main one I'm not too sure I mean hmm I'm not too sure if I really want that as the main picture I could probably make it toggle as well just so it has like a I don't know a better look and I have to keep in mind of the actual resolution and memory um to waste in a space so I can only add so many pictures and images without everything like going like all wonky but at least we know that is the main picture so what I'm gonna do is try to play around with some uh old data and I am going to uh try to find stuff so let me just check um alright this is six eighty-four by three eighty-four and it looks okay for the most part this picture right here that's only five ninety-four by four oh four I I need like large size images this is pretty large so what I'll do is just name this as I don't know the actual leopard itself his name is Akumi and he was like one of the fever arena mascots we're gonna go back here and I'm going to uh just change my source for this just to see if the image loads up I need to uh alright save it and then let's see if it uh works hey what's up um is it gonna be available for hen the offline client more likely than not due to LV two kernel issues and hen can't enable like debug settings and whatnot what I'm working on is this is for a new client I'm going to release ah so here's a perfect example of like having a memory issue so as you seen here the picture that was too large in size you could see that it has like a texture issue and this is something I have to troubleshoot and try to debug like every twenty-four or seven um when it comes to adding like original images and plus I need to make sure like you know other pictures are not having the same issue so these two are fine up here but we need to find a better image to place in the middle so what I'm gonna do is try to find regular like FIFA I'm gonna try to find more FIFA or FIFA twenty-ten images that are maybe not too much or that is not wasting too much memory and size like this one right here looks pretty good for the most part so what I'm gonna do is just save this let me make sure I'll just save everything into the correct directory since I'm gonna be messing with uh fever arena a lot today um I'm not too sure how long the live stream will last since it's just something I randomly wanted to do and I just wanted to showcase kind of like the inner workings on what I usually do when I work on the offline content or the offline build itself on the new offline build will be like there's a lot of major stuff that I am adding to the current client like there's a bunch of clothing um I did a lot of fixing in terms of like the screen links um you know general pictures and stuff uh making sure everything in terms of like personal spaces and public spaces are in the correct directory but um yeah not trying to get too much off of topic but I need to find the environment section of this and make sure my picture is saved into the correct directory so alright I'm gonna go back here and we're gonna try another picture so we know the DDF one works just fine uh but the Kumi one didn't really was not working so I'm just gonna call this twenty-ten uh I don't know Africa or I'll just call it AF I like to usually name my stuff short before I like usually uh get started on um working on other stuff oh snap and then we're just gonna retest this again so let me make sure I don't even know where I play okay there you go I had it in my favorite since I know I was gonna be working on it pretty much this whole time hi what really I mean I don't think fixing clothing is that boring in a sense I mean and hold on I'm just like trying to read you gotta give me guys a second cuz I'm like reading like multiple chats at the same time so somebody says so you're gonna release a separate client that will work oh no not for hen because hen doesn't give you all the debug uh settings nah clothing Jinx is the clothing master like she's the reason why my character look fresh right now and what graphics engine I think it used um not physics uh or havoc they used I think maybe a early version of or at least the early version of home use like unity I believe but um you can see right here um me just doing a quick sample fix we got a better picture so you can see how we could toggle between two pictures and now at least we got something working on the main screen so that looks kinda better yeah um you know just to make it fitting since we in fever arena right now I should wear my one of my favorite fever arena track jackets there you go here's one I love fever arena like the track jackets back on home I used to wear them all the time um but at least we got one image up now what we're gonna do is try to get these two images on the side or at least trying to test so what I'm gonna do is label this or try to find FIFA two and let's go back to the actual XML itself uh okay actually this may be the same one from the actual server so that says PP one-two XML and this was a actual RSS file and I'm trying to see if we can I may do some custom stuff with Photoshop later on too just to make uh you know the spaces look more alive cuz that's what I'm trying to do is try to give more of these spaces not such a dead look yeah at least my stream is not acting wonky I had to turn down some settings which is fine I could deal with that as long as you know people are just getting the general gist of this so boom we're back here again there's a lot of reloading I have to do ah so boom we found the first space so we got a poster right here for fever arena the other one will probably right here I'm not too sure if I should add Zakumi or if I should add somebody else but what we can do right now I will open up Photoshop and I will create a new layer and we're gonna get the exact dimensions of this poster so actually before I do that let's get the dimensions cuz I like these actually came from the Japanese server so this is two ninety-three by four twenty-one so let me go to new two ninety-three four thirty-one okay and if I have to make a custom image or poster at least I know the exact size that you know where these can fill up is and the same thing goes for this one so yeah I may actually we may do this let's see I'm gonna take my boy Zakumi uh he may not look too good then I don't wanna stretch him out yeah he looks kinda weird let me see but that doesn't look too bad now alright that may be that may be a little bit better I'm gonna make sure I save him as a PNG and I'm gotta make sure I gotta save them or save this picture in the correct directory there's so many folders I have to go through and it's like it's kinda mind-boggling so we're just gonna call them Zakumi test I don't know PNG why not whatever and I'm going to just see he will if he pops up on the actual second one right here there's gotta be this one so this picture is three or this picture gonna be three so I'm gonna just copy the source and that's what I usually do it's just a lot of testing goes behind this I'm probably talking to myself so if anyone has questions I will toggle back to the YouTube uh livestream thingy thing and then I will uh reload this space real quick so let's not two birds and one stone oh what's up what's up okay so let's see these clothes are where are you running this from I'm running this from the PlayStation three I'm using my uh regular Dex PS3 I'm not using my uh dev kit hopefully this stuff is kinda interesting to you guys cuz I feel like I'd be like boring people but like I don't know so let's see alright our boys are cool me looking good that actually looks pretty good I may move this photo to another area though cuz I want it trying to see I wanna put it like near the store right here like somewhere I wanna put it like maybe right here so actually what I may do I may be doubling up on Zakumi I may have Zakumi here and then Zakumi here yeah that's what I'll do I'll kinda have him toggle so he's gonna actually go to here so I'm gonna have this via right now I'm going to have this and then I am going to uh try or number four this may actually go in order so I'm gonna put FIFA two for slot oh make sure have the sources correct I'm going to make sure source four goes into here alrighty so I'm gonna reload the space again just to see if everything pops up oh thank you for the twenty dollars you really don't have to do this this is just purely for like education man like and note any donations going to me is going to my channel it doesn't do anything from destination home I I do have to state that due to like legality issues but um here is alright so we got our boys the Kumi right here he looking good he looking pretty good now we're gonna try to find uh oh so it ain't that damn poster where the hell it went then okay so it's this poster that's number four we can do another poster um we're gonna try to find something more soccer oriented I'm gonna put something right there cuz I wanna leave all the market place stuff into like one area trying to find something that looks pretty good that looks pretty good I mean I don't know I need a really good like picture that looks pretty good I like that one so let me just save this and we're gonna do some uh quick ass editing some quick edits hopefully YouTube doesn't demonetize me for cursing cuz content cops alright let me see I mean I don't we could maybe do a two-tone like toggle screen with this I'm gonna call this uh or save it at least test two and um I'm going to try to do something else that's the thing trying to find theme stuff that is like oh this is the Brazil one I want something always like themed there oh that looks pretty good or that image is pretty good as well too we can um we can maybe do like a two-screen toggle cuz I don't wanna waste memory hey thank you for Konami oh no problem no problem no problem oh thank you and also I do wanna give a a big thanks to you guys I recently hit ten thousand subscribers I literally um I've been a busy with home stuff and I've been a lot busy with like personal stuff in my life and um you know seeing that today really made me happy so I really appreciate you uh guys for that but um what I'm going to do now is uh I'm going to find the image that I just found okay ah I messed up I'm going to we're gonna make this a little bit wider cuz I don't want these images to like get like they look weird these are like some basic ass Photoshop skills I'm doing I'm not doing anything amazing like it's just that looks pretty good I think that will look good um we could call this save as and I'm gonna I don't know test three why not alright so what I'm gonna do we're just gonna copy this here hopefully that will be for number five um but we're gonna test two uh I named these as PNGs both of them so what I'm gonna do is just use this simple line of code right here make sure it's spelled right so everything is straight and then I'm going to uh alright so this should be done now let's reload this uh scene that threads uh little thing should be gone sorry if I'm asking too much questions but this is gonna be online yes the the major goal this is just like for you guys to see what how kind of like the offline client works when it comes to online and stuff of that nature um you know then we're getting prepped for like lobby server and stuff like but yeah online is still like the major focal point for this whole project alright so video is playing Zakumi is good alright this image is good that image is good so at least that is fine that's not even on so where where did that go ah so it's right here I'm not too sure if this was an image or whatnot alright so resume along this only ah I'm not too sure so number six here we're gonna do this right now um just to make it quick we're going to see where image according to this image six at I don't think this is an image but if uh the other fever arena poster I'll put that over here then I don't mind if it's two and like two things let me see something really quick alright so alright I just gotta make sure everything's working alright that's good two images good alright bow so that's right there what I'm going to do is make sure uh I'm just trying to focus on something real quick I'm going to be taking test image uh what is this called I had it okay this was called like number one or two or whatnot fifa dot jpg that could go there and just to uh make this quick I'm gonna put seven over here as well even though that's probably not the correct size we can manage to debug this later alright so sorry I was just reading stuff in the background let me um I got a lot of stuff alright so that's back on alright we're going to I don't know alright so that's still toggling alright she's here these two posters are here alright take your time thanks for joining once again okay so this is a image this could go we need this FIFA World Tour Cup let's do some uh let me let me type this in who won the FIFA twenty-ten soccer tournament I don't I don't recall who won Spain so Spain won the World Cup so Espanola we're gonna get a nice picture of him alright so cool that's a big image we may have to compress that I don't know if the this is a damn image gonna load since it's so huge um I may have to use two test images that actually may work better I'm gonna try to do the high resolution one but if not or we could maybe try to get a toggle going on you know I'm just trying to find some more stuff that I'm just trying to find some more stuff that will uh I don't know will fit this holy hell that is a large image four thousand I don't know cuz it seems like older spaces couldn't hi- uh know the high resolution okay so what I'm going to do now is take this image and we're gonna call this a test five where is the screen link stuff don't tell me I just lost it I lost it okay there go and I'm going to just move that over here alright alright so everything should be okay for now oh I am toggling the wrong one oh yes beastly my guy hey how are you doing and welcome back welcome back sorry guys I'm just I'm doing multiple things right now and I'm I'm trying to multitask that's best as possible so this one is working okay it toggles so cool me looking good movies playing uh alright oh it did work nice alright I think this looks good I think yep we I think we uh what you might call it hey Y C thanks for joining I'm good I'm good I'm good everything looks pretty straight so fever arena is now done in terms of that situation just DM me about it unka uh later on but uh what you might call it but yeah I think everything looks good how you guys think about it I think everything looks straight pretty much now the you know s- the space looks more alive oh yo they jigging hey but yeah at least fever arena looks pretty good now alright so yeah T I could help you with that uh later on so everything looks great alright I don't know what other space I want to do um I'm depending I'm trying to think cuz I know a lot of spaces I show actually I could show you what I did on the other day Jinx actually knows what I've uh done cuz I showed her a little bit earlier cuz me and her we're trying to work on some cool stuff with clothing guys like really 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 cool stuff so the next two point O client we will drop will be uh pretty fire but I'll show you another thing what I did for the Audi space um if you guys know me I love cars so what I did here was add some like Audi themed vehicles on my ads my concept you know art for vehicles right here I also um you know while that is toggling over here on the big screen I looked up some random like Audi R eight video of like the new Audi R eight and um I allowed or basically what I did was uh what you might call it I added uh this video via right here yeah i- it's a lot of work what we're doing cuz uh kind of a on topic but off topic thing you can see here um Jinx and I've been uh trying to combine a bunch of clothing and you can see here um even though there's missing icons which is something we're still trying to get everything done um there is a lot of stuff we added to the client where's the Teslas the Tesla Ts they should have like a Tesla space but yeah this is some stuff we did uh via for the Audi space you can use GIMP or the picture to vector scale oh I use Photoshop where the scorpion I see that you are reading how do you oh what you might call it you and your friend designing his stuff oh we really don't well I don't really design stuff I just replace stuff huh but how do you um a Tesla space fire here how do you both intend to work this out and 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 will this player boom online so yeah basically what offline is we can kind of like use the offline client a little bit not everything but you could kind of use the offline client and replace stuff that's why it's kind of good to be or for us or to tell development team to mess with the offline client cuz we could learn more stuff about online because a lot of the offline stuff even in the builds will still kind of like have a lot of the same logs and stuff which online will have but um yeah I don't even know where this crown is from I don't know I seen it in wardrobe I liked it it looked fresh and I was like yo it looks pretty damn dope so that's what I was rocking with um but what I'm going to do is let's see if we could get the bowling alley uh working with some screens and some uh some videos and stuff I'm not too sure if I could do it cuz I know certain spaces uh have some issues but we're gonna go to a bowling alley I'm going to maybe have I don't know I don't know how I'm gonna do the bowling alley cuz I know they had some uh alright so bowling alley is now up oh damn so is there even screen links okay it's it's bitching about some DDS files this used to be a video but we can't add two videos in one space we could like have something toggled here and then there was like I don't know if this was for like the mini games if you guys remember uh these three uh screens I right here I'm pointing to was this like actual promotion I think it was but I'm not too sure if it was for a mini game if it was for mini games then I don't know but um let me go back to the PC and let's uh kind of let's kind of try to figure this out together so let me put back on my screen alright so fever arena is now done I have to go back here and I need to figure out where the hell the bowling alley is located well I actually know where it's located but I need to find like the file so game space I should know this by the back of my hand my friend Deadsec would be mad at me but I'm huh what you might call it we're going to go to the what's this home internal S E E home lobbies game space yeah screen links okay we got some screen links now here it says there's two videos and three images alright so what I like to do is always when I work on spaces I like to kind of keep my stuff a little organized so I like to have my videos into like one folder and I like to have my images into one folder what I like to do is uh kinda have like a test dummy video we can use so I'm actually gonna go to my little like repertoire of videos and we're going to try to uh get a video on the screen somehow I know with home videos are like usually in four eighty P but um I don't know I think maybe they were for scores but I think you could toggle them but we can we can we gonna play around with it but I gotta just find where I have my uh not documents but I don't even know where I have PlayStation home videos okay I have like a ton of collection of videos on my PC and I need to figure out so I don't know I'm gonna try to choose any random ass video I don't even care what it is PlayStation home redesign alright I'm just gonna make sure oh that's a seven twenty video oh that ain't too good we need I wanted to make sure like I don't even know if a seven twenty video will run you know whatever we're gonna we're gonna test it out so what I'm gonna do is just rename this video to test and I'm going to uh set this up so video screen one here you can see here from the line of code like um I'll even show you this is how like the servers would actually run well the link is actually down of course but this is how like uh the servers would read like images uh videos and stuff like that so that's kind of like a little you know Easter egg again well not really a Easter egg but that's just how stuff works so what I'm gonna do just go ahead and get this set up so I'm gonna copy this full uh like the stuff from like the directory and I'm going to make sure I have my slashes in the correct area I think it can read it backwards since home knows what like well basically where the directories are found at however um just to make everything make sure it's like right the first time we can test this so test MP four we're gonna see if this works and we're gonna see if the bowling alley will load hey what's up what's up what's up and sorry if I bang on my keyboard a lot I have a really bad problem of trying to type thank you I don't even know okay so it didn't load can you break jailbreak I think you can only get those with hand but not full CFW trying to see alright I'm not too sure what's the issue now cuz I'm like wondering if A I didn't I don't even think it's trying to load any of the videos and this may be an issue like I'm trying to look in logs right now and I'm trying to uh let me just try to find it and uh yeah it's not even wanting to load anything I'm not too sure what did I do unless I didn't put it in the correct directory wait everything should be in the correct area home internal home lobbies I'm not too sure maybe cuz of the video is not good yeah it says video we can what we could do is uh I don't even know I'm gonna take this random image and I'm going to uh I'm gonna see if an image will load here at least see this is the issue with certain spaces I think certain spaces still wanna request stuff from uh like an actual I'm gonna see if at least the image will pop up yeah I don't even know what the hell's the issue I think bowling alley is not uh vibing with me right now for whatever reason yeah cuz not it's not even loading the stuff I would probably have to do more insight but at least I tried to get the bowling alley but it's weird it's requesting a DDS image maybe it wants it in that location I could just lie and rename it to idea DDS or save it we could do another space and try to fix uh scenes uh just trying to find like spaces that may have like movies and stuff if not if I can't fix this one I may you know just show off some cool other content alright so sorry I was just trying to like read stuff behind okay so trying to see this looks like some pictures could go here I'm not even too sure what can I add not even this may be actually a difficult one so I'm not too sure I may actually switch the stream into another I don't know something different actually you know what that's all do I'll as of right now I'll kind of like take a break on screen links because with certain spaces I'm not too sure and I have to like I already knew fever arena was gonna work that's why I wanted to like start off with that one but I could kind of show you some of the stuff that has been going on behind the scene and space so um when it comes to the actual record or you know the furniture and stuff for the offline content um what I will do is show you some of the stuff that has been added in terms of like posters or whatever all my other building client already have like my furniture or setup via in my house and I can switch back to that one real quick um but just to kind of show you this is some of the stuff that is added but you can see here um you know all of the what you might call it works you can see here that there's like chairs and stuff we added and just to show you that like it actually works and it's not just in my inventory um you can see here I could just place a chair right here or whatnot and that's what's gonna be new for the two point O client I never actually played the Sims fully I played like Sims four a little bit but nothing major um but yeah you can see here the chair works um you know I could sit down on it if I wanted to move it it's just like regular home just with some other debugs headings but um actually what I'll do in a quick second I will uh cut off this PS three I will turn on my other PlayStation three or not my other PS three I mean but my other build and I will load it up just so I can show you guys my Harpistudio alright so my PS three is just it's not my stream this time it's just my PS three is reconnecting So it may take a little while for it to boot up. Um, fully. Yeah, so I'm just waiting for the console output to come in. But thank you guys for watching the livestream. Hopefully, it's just crazy that um, what you might call it. It's just crazy that your guys will still stick with me even though like my damn internet is like trash as hell. Is there any way you could run this on a five point O four PlayStation four? Uh, simple answer is no, crazy answer is yes. Um, the PlayStation four. Or what I was trying to say, the PlayStation four itself could run like a distro of Linux. And I'm not too sure if you could run, I know you could run RPC PCS three on Linux, so in a crazy world, if you, you know. Somehow set up Linux on your PlayStation four, make sure it could boot up RPC S three. And then um, what you might call it. Is. I'm, I'm having a brain fart, but uh, actually having RPC S three. On your device on that your modded PlayStation four, you could possibly run home. I never tested it out, but that's just some crazy ass theory I had. The loading time, excuse this unless actually maybe my build is dying. No, it's not. It's just, the reason why home uh takes long is because there's a lot of spaces that is uh trying to livestream. I don't know if you can actually see the logs on my, oh yeah, you can. Um, you can see here, it's kind of at. A standstill, and this is what happens when I try to boot into any build. Yeah, this is crazy, but this is just shows you like how when I try to load up two point O versus when I try to load up this cuz. I'm trying to see if it will maybe boot up faster. If not, I may, you know what. Oh my god, this is painful. Dude, this is crazy, but this is just go to show you how bad the loading times it was on home when you like added a ton of items. Hopefully, it will go in the next five seconds, or I'm going to cry. Let me see. If not, I may just switch back to the other build because this is just taking way too long. I just wanna make sure like. Yeah. Ah, I think I see what's the issue. It is loading some stuff from the test inventory. I don't even know. This is just crazy. Yeah, I'm about to switch back to the working one cuz I. Oh my god, right when I disconnected it, wait, hold on. Right when I literally disconnected, then it uh, works. I literally disconnected from home and it worked. Okay, so this is my crib. I don't know why everything is loading. Why? Okay, so half my damn space didn't load up. Maybe cuz I disconnected from home. Yo, what happened to my damn like sofa? Whatever. Let's see if that command still works, uh. Yeah, this build has been through some pain per se. Load avatar. I don't even know. Let's see if anything pops up. Alright, so it does load my items. Well, I used to have two nice couches right here. And I used to have uh, a nice little. I used to have a lot of ornaments, but this was kinda like my little crib. Um, it's missing some items, I guess because I disconnected my console, so yeah. Oh, that, yeah. Let's do that. What the hell? It didn't even like that. I'm not even too worried about this, but I just kinda wanted to show you my little uh, space. Hello, Gaki, welcome to the livestream. Hope you're doing okay. Uh, what you might call it? I'm going to uh. Go back and disconnect from this client. I'm gonna go back to the one I've been working on and trying to fix. And um, yeah. What happened? What I'm going to do now is maybe I could show off the female clothing. I think that's what I'm gonna do. And my console ID. It just showed. Sometimes I notice, well, disconnecting in TM, uh, what it does is like, cuz everything is what you might call it. Well, this takes some time loading too as well, but it's not as bad because I'm not loading everything from test inventory. Hopefully, it won't take too long, but um, what I'm going to do is uh. What you might call it showcase off some female clothing and whatever from that. And then I'm going to probably just show what some other things I've been working on in terms of like them, excuse me, like thumbnails and stuff. Loading will still take a, a while for just a base client. But as you can see, it wasn't as bad as the other one. It's because, you know, when you have a bunch of spaces. And to like one damn build, it's just, it's crazy, but um. What I'm going to do now is uh. I don't even know. Just trying to find something we can mess with. Alright. Alright, so. We're gonna show some clothing avatars or whatever. For female. My good friend G- Gaki, uh, she was helping me, you know, create a female avatar. I can't create female avatars for stuff. And she helps me every now and then. Uh, but uh, there's a lot of stuff for females. But uh, I don't know. Like, I do remember some of the stuff I did add or didn't add, but remember from cache, I remember this from uh. You can see, what you might call it, like these little. Cat paw thingies. Um, there's some other stuff like the Hatsune Miku leaks. The two-tone one, this was actually a paid, it was like two hundred yen, I remember, from Japan. I wish we had the male ones. Um, there's just like a ton of stuff though for female. But this is just some like female stuff. There's like a bunch of like uh, female clothing as well. Chill. But yeah, this is just some stuff that is going being or being added to the base client. It's just, there's a lot of stuff I had to like QA. Um, but. I personally uh. Don't even remember a lot of this stuff cuz a lot of this stuff is coming from multi-regions. Yeah, that's the thing, uh, adding stuff to the client uh, for anybody's watching, we like, we tried to add like as much clothing. As possible, but what happens is home basically is like, hold up, bro. You literally having too much stuff and it will just freeze you. I tried to troubleshoot this myself, uh, like by looking up like debug commands, I tried to troubleshoot this via with uh, D E C R. Like I have my development kit, right? And the development kit has like extra RAM. For like, you know, basically for certain games, um, certain titles will need extra RAM to utilize stuff. Nah, I don't actually. I really don't. Not now at least. But uh, yeah, that's just for female clothing, just to show off, but um. I could show off another space I've been working on, this Asia four. I got the screen links to uh, actually work. So this is um, this Asia. Via right here. What I added here was uh, some uh, MP four file via from like the game spot, um. Which I'm gonna call it space, or not space, but I added this YouTube video just showcasing off the. Um, trailer itself for this game. I don't even know how you pronounce it, the Seagia or the Seagia, but I know this was for the PlayStation three. I know they have a couple of games on the PSP. They used to have some cool uh, PSN avatars too as well in the PS three store, I remember. And they actually have some stuff on the PS four store. But uh, yeah, this is this, the Seagia or whatever it's called, and that's something I finished. Yes, I don't know why the spawning or the maze. I don't know why that triggers, like, it was just, what the fuck? Oh, excuse me, but I'm probably gonna get freaking copyright flagged, but clearly, this collision, for whatever reason. It's connecting to B Z B. I don't know why it's connecting to B Z B. I should be falling off the map, but I guess this is adding uh, collision right now. This will be burning my damn toes right now. But uh, that's that. Um, oh, I don't know if people saw this from the last time. Cuz I added uh. Cuz I know I showed off the Japanese Central Plaza, or not Central Plaza. I did actually show off Japanese Central Plaza, but I uh, only showed off like the daytime one. I made a sunset version of it. I think it kinda fits the theme of it. That was one of my favorite spaces from Japan home. This is it right here. It has all the same screen link stuff. I need to try to fix the Japanese mall, but I'm having major issues with that. I'm having some trouble trying to. Uh, what you might call it? But yeah, thank you guys for supporting me. Thank you guys for watching me. Uh, you know, cuz this is pretty fun for me to do sometimes, just to kinda show you on what I'm working behind on the scenes. I think it's, you know. Not only it's good for like preservation reasons, just to see how the progress is going, but you can kinda see in live time, you know, PlayStation home again. And um, yeah. I'm gonna try to find another space that I could possibly work on, but I, I'm not too sure, but same thing, uh, here's the sunset. Uh. What you might call it? Japanese home square. I really like the whole vibe of it. It looks really, really nice. Like I wish, I'm not even too sure, like, it seems like this apartment was maybe used in Japan home, like you can see here. This literally looks like an apartment that they were trying to make. Um, but here is, you know, just a sunset view. I really do like the whole like vibe to it. But that's something I worked on when one of the older clients. I have my logo here, which I like, I don't know, kinda watermarking stuff. But uh, yeah. I think I'm gonna go to another space. I'm gonna try to figure out one where we can kinda work on. I'm not too sure. Not gonna go to Singstar right now because uh, copyright issues. Um. Oh, we can try. I guess we could try Namco Bandai. The Namco Theater space, that thing runs off a Lua script, which is weird. Like, the, the movie thing. Namco Theater, there it goes. We're gonna try. To what you might call it. Alright, so that's loaded. This space had three, um. Basically trailers going on at once. You can see here, it's giving that hundred, that one hundred error issue. And I don't really understand why it's doing that. But um. What I'm going to do is uh, turn back on my screen and we're gonna try to figure this out together, so um. I'm not even too sure. Let's figure out, um. Okay, so. We're going to go and try to figure out. Where everything's located. It's been a while trying, me trying to fix this screen, but hopefully maybe, you know, with the grace of me live streaming, maybe I'll be lucky, so. Yeah. I will uh. You know. I'll be trying to find some stuff. Alright, environments play max two Namco movie scene, so that's where the file located. alright environments play max two Namco movie scene so that's where the file location is at so I'm gonna go here I'm gonna find play max two and I'm going to uh find the screen links in the not SDC file but we're gonna check out the dot scene itself screen links alright so the screen links the weird thing about a lot of Japanese spaces a lot of the source files would come in or come from another file location which is an issue so what I have to do is find this correct directory so in this case I'm gonna go back to B N G carrot seven I always remember B N G carrot seven since I worked on ninety seven a lot and this was for the Namco space or yeah so the screen content you can see here and here's the screen link so this is what we're gonna be focused on okay you can see here it had three videos but um you can see here I have none of my videos and images into correct directory this actually this line of code I did work on back in ninety seven excuse me and I tried to uh get this fixed what I'm going to do now is possibly get some stuff working what I'm going to do is uh set wait what the hell I'm actually getting confused I'm not too sure why is it saying I have five videos when it's oh maybe cuz it's toggling it maybe toggles two videos so what I'm gonna do actually is we're going to I'm gonna do something random so we're gonna go to YouTube and this is how I usually uh what you might call it I'm going to try to find some uh Ridge Racer gameplay so I don't know PS three trailer and we're gonna try to start off with that so for example I could use this advertisement and I could place it in here so let me turn this down so I won't have any uh thing come over the live stream itself but um I think this will be a fitting video since it's Ridge Racer seven that came out I use this random like sketchy website not even joking with you called Y M P four down uh dot download and this is how I uh usually um download some quality videos not too sure if it could handle six forty by three sixty but we're going to try if it doesn't work um I will try to uh possibly that's a four eighty video whatever I'm going to try to see if this w- we could get one picture on the screen and if not we also gonna try to get one image on the screen so I'm gonna put Ridge racer seven uh I don't know images and I'm gonna try to find a really cool looking image for Ridge Racer seven something that will look like it will uh promote the game or maybe like a wallpaper or something that looks pretty nice but I it's too clear I don't want see that's the thing it's memory issues alright that looks pretty nice I I like this one what I'm gonna do is go to the folder we're working on now which will be uh according to this we will have everything under B N G carrot seven screen content so that's where I will have my images at two so just wanna make sure I'm doing this correctly I'm getting confused now screen content okay and we're gonna just save this here we're gonna call it Rage and then boom and I'm going to go in here and we're gonna find this and we're going to uh test this image to see if it loads I know I had trouble with this before but hopefully uh everything will be just fine so hopefully uh it will pop up I don't see this is so odd because now it literally said it was fine I got let me check logs real quick logs will kind of tell me in a better way if this will be like if this will work so I'm trying to see like it says hold on B N G carrot failed to download cuz it's not in cache that makes sense um yeah I'm not too sure I gotta think about this systematically so what I'll do is I'll try to trick it I'll make the round screen or actually I'll set this to image I actually will set each one to image so each one will not be a video format and we could see which one will be uh what you might call it oh and I don't even have that screen up right now my bad you can't even see what I'm working on okay um but uh I'm just gonna try to work on each image itself and then I'm gonna save it and then if anything I can revert back to its original format since I have the original content I think this scene had an issue due to like some lower script and that's weird like this the theater movie theater was like a two-part thing so something did change clearly because uh I don't know if the picture is too good looking or but the screen is black now so at least that's a start and at least we can uh try to debug this in a better manner Ridge Racers a negative one what yeah I'm not even too sure about this one this one maybe be giving me some issues and this may take too long for me to check this out but least I know that images could possibly pop up I'm not too sure if it's cuz I let me just make sure I'm didn't like rename this off or whatever um no actually I didn't save that one so the last one wasn't saved welcome to the live stream cosmetics thank you for watching hey Toyo Kyle I'm trying to fix the screen links uh to stuff but I'm having a little issue I'm not too sure hey thanks hey Sark Sarkatus sorry if I pronounced your name wrong hope everyone's doing okay I'm not too sure I'm trying to get I think cuz it was a lower script issue but I'm not even too sure um we're gonna do something else I'm trying to find more things we can possibly add to spaces and we can kind of uh you know make them feel alive again I don't wanna mess with Central Plaza right now we could possibly mess with the first floor mall maybe I don't know hmm it's like I'm debating on which could be like a hard project or we could kind of start halfway Sark okay Sark is cool um that's better for me sometimes I I do have a stuttering issue and I do apologize and I have a less how to screen links screen links are good for Namco Arcade Center um what I'll do actually I'll show you right now real quick my boy Kyle and um we can um go back to the mall cuz I I'm not too sure how my attack the mall because I know it has so many uh pictures and stuff alright so actually before we even go to Namco real quick I do wanna scope out the place a little bit kind of get an idea of what we're working with so we got one video right here that's easy we have one two three four five six seven eight nine yeah we got a ton of posters to try to fill um this may be like a double project but let's go to Namco real quick I have it in my favorites since that's one of my favorite spaces um we did get the Namco what I did was added a Namco Museum volume three video which was one of my uh favorite videos or video games for the PlayStation one but in the meantime while Namco is loading I don't wanna go back and forth too much in terms of like uh wasting any time I am going to try to find out where I have my uh what you might call it located the mall I just I like doing this a lot just you know it makes me feel pretty cool that you know people are pretty interested just to see the behind the scenes development for this second floor core marketplace okay I just gotta make sure cuz there's so many files I go through every single day and yeah environments I need to go to the S C E core marketplace let's make sure homemade froze on me yeah it's still alive okay first floor Lord what is this one too I I I don't like that let's check the dot scene cuz that will kind of snitch on itself screen links okay environments core marketplace okay so that's for that one that is a lot of posters that's actually a lot of work Jumbotron MP three Jumbotron MP two fashion battle V me okay some of this will squ- snitch on itself oh but here is Namco museum you can see here that um that I have the actual Namco intro running in the background via right here and I also have the um but for this I'm not too sure I didn't get this to load up I think I had an issue with this before I need to probably come back to it but um I'm gonna try to tackle the hub but let's go ahead and focus on the mall and we can um try to tackle this I'm not too sure how I'm gonna do this because I think there's an issue I'm noticing right now from looking at the logs some of this stuff is going to the first floor mall and some of this stuff is going to the second floor mall so it's just like reading from two directories so let's let's try to figure out this together cuz I I usually have a brain fart sometimes so reading the logs what I like to do is analyze the first floor mall we have a store called Furniture Estate Game Sidekicks threads exclusives and sodium so I think what they did was is split into two parts so MP two I don't even know what that is exclusives sidekicks estates threads bilabong that's not here I think let's check store two because there was different iterations to home store two I think the version I had had like a Granzilla um store it had Konami right here it also had bilabong okay so I did conclude that that this file is reading from multiple locations so it's trying to add both of them for one and for two I should have this will actually tell me right now Potomac I don't see anything about Potomac I think I don't know I think it overwritten stuff so stuff maybe I may have to edit this from two things so let's just focus on the first floor mall and we're gonna try to see what we can do with this yeah we could go shopping in none of the stores Gaki that's for sure which store you wanna go to run you your money I owe you something um I'm going to I don't even know let's let's do some dummy images so what I'm gonna do we're gonna try to focus on threads so what I'm going to do is go back on my desktop and I'm going to create a folder I'm gonna just call this mall and this is where I'm gonna have all my test images at I'm gonna go through the cache data that I have been given to since Toyo Kyle if you still in the um what you might call it I'm going to try to find some stuff from your images I'm going to try to find like a dummy image we can use possibly for testing the stream okay I'm trying to find some images we can test actually I forgot it's not in globals I think it may be in videos which is weird I really had some good images before I'm trying to see wait it's just like a video showcase I'm trying to find some something for the hub or like something that actually came from the stores itself which is pretty difficult oh wow that's from Apache power should I need to note that oh wow looking in your data I found like little mockups to the PlayStation four I'm just trying to find something oh wow these are the Irem stuff what the hell you had these in here what this goes to Irem that's actually pretty nice so this goes to the other space so me live streaming right now actually helped me found some stuff um I'm going to go to uh I'm just gonna just do random data or I'm just trying to find oh this is not world map videos I know they considered this stuff whatever we're gonna use this test the dummy image just for the first part just to see if it loads alright so this right here will be our test image even those for V me I just wanna make sure that the screen links can load up in the perfect space alright cool yeah the PS four mockups is pretty nice alright cool yeah the PS4 mockups is pretty nice um but what I'm going to try to do is try to figure where the location of this stuff is going oh this is a lot of posters estates game shears I'm gonna do this for shears let's try to fix one of the sources what I like to do is use my old sources I mean to be honest I could even do that I couldn't even use old sources to try to replace them with new ones like actually you know what since I'm very lazy right now we're going to see if my boy Zakumi will pop up in the hub I wish uh okay so congratulations we did a major step we got our boys Akumi right in the middle of shears um and yeah we have even though he really doesn't fit here at least he has a spot and we know what you call it so at least we know that one works what I'm going to do is just keep on testing so I'm just gonna actually use Zakumi he's gonna be my friend today Zakumi is just gonna help me out and uh he's gonna tell me where file locations are located at I don't think Kyle is Japanese no he he used to play Japan home that's what I was referring to Japan home was pretty nice what the hell costumes ah there he go so that's that so we know Zakumi belongs there furniture this is just what I like to do I call it pre-planning testing even though and that's the cool thing about home you could read stuff from other thing you used to play Japan home Gaki be nice oh she was probably gonna call me alright so furniture alright he's up in here he looks nice good um the the thing is with this though is I'm trying to find good images so that's what I'm gonna do now is uh so threads he's in here damn it's it's hard to kind of find I need to find maybe in my old client let's check let me check my old client the one I worked on before because that may actually have some thread stuff in there cuz I've been working on like double the client each time oh my head is starting to hurt I don't know what it's called it's called S C E A that's what it's called like I'm trying to think of Home Square or not Home Square but the hub action casual marketplace S C Plaza then maybe it I see Plaza Station maybe it screen content images ah okay yeah this is some of the stuff I've been working on or tempting alright we could get one picture working for exclusives alright I'm going to take these two and we're gonna go to uh the correct directory where we were working at originally environment you know what I'm gonna make this easier myself I'm not gonna go through all those folders it's just a pain to work through I'm just gonna call this mall uh I don't know mall one mall one screen links I don't know this is gonna be where I'm gonna have my images at cuz I don't like there's so many subfolders it's just such a pain through working through back and forth and I'm trying to avoid that we're going to uh use these DDS files that were for home I'm gonna use this one okay I'm going to uh alright so we knew that with threads so cuz I wanna do as much testing I wanna do I still need to find uh some working ones alright I'm gonna have the Adidas stuff here cuz threads did sell Adidas back in the day and that was my stuff okay now let's just load up and hopefully that will pop up alright take care Gaki thanks for joining I won't alright take care you can uh text me later okay uh my boy Kyle you still here alright if you're still here Kyle I think I actually may help you or have you help me later on so the image did pop up so we're looking good just got four damn images let me see one second I had to cut this yeah so I may actually have you help me because I'm not too sure how I really want to uh you know do the hub I keep calling it the hub but you know it's called the mall um but yeah I'm just trying to think on how to do this okay we need to find exclusives at least alright we're gonna do exclusives right so the posters may be either in the object deaths yes I noticed that it's really weird like it depends like it's thrown everywhere bro um it may be either in the object deaths or video folder but we're gonna get this one exclusives I don't know ah hold up I think I got it I think I found the one for exclusives alright this one is I hate that my chair creaks I need a I need a gaming chair bro wait object object dynamics let me look hold on now you're good man I just you know want to make this seem more alive ah so we got that one good oh we need a good sodium one um have you been a sodium Kyle ever cuz we're gonna take a look at your data and we're gonna try to pull I'm gonna check your data now I wish I could just type in and look for sodium and then I don't know I don't know what could I do with this one think it's gonna stretch it out so much and it's gonna look so ugly yeah that doesn't look good oh you did okay cool I'm trying to find some sodium uh posters um that are like a certain size oh I'm dumb bro I am looking in the wrong section I am literally looking in whatever I'm looking in the wrong section for sure I see some Hudson stuff you did have the Irem we're gonna try to look at globals too globals should maybe I'm gonna check both your caches but if it's not in there don't even worry about it cuz uh this is so odd object deaths has it oh no that's for S stats the hell is this uh holy hell this is a lot I'm trying to just see something sodium related Men in Black I need to look at the screen oh this is from Oseberry Farms some of this stuff trying to see something sodium related I know somebody has to have sodium somebody and their mama gotta have sodium yo the track jacket I just seen it that was fresh yeah this bruh that's actually dope I'm actually gonna save this this is gonna be for later this could go for the Granzella mall so I'm gonna save that sodium where are you oh my god icebreaker what the hell is this wait what is this oh I remember these challenges I do toward the end of home they used to have challenges actually has somebody's P S N I D that's crazy four twenty what the hell it's a lot of movie stuff actually uh it's kinda hard looking for stuff cuz it's like I don't know questionnaire corner maybe I'm looking in the wrong section I actually never looked in object deaths I usually look in globals and stuff if you've seen PS3 covers yeah they do actually look like from Konami penthouse which I noticed bruh I don't see anything sodium like and these images are kinda small we're gonna do this actually sorry if I'm taking time just to find one damn sodium image but um we're gonna get it bro atom universe stuff alright this looks kinda more better I guess so this is what I do half of the time when I do screen links I try to find stuff ah Adidas I am trying to ah shears we could use this ah sodium nice we got two we got ah no where did they go no where did you go where did it go bro this is gonna piss me off now oh my god I don't wait I think we're finding it cuz some of the stuff is starting to look we could do a tool toggle with this I'm going to uh I'm gonna have this here I'm so mad at myself cuz I lost it I'm literally going to cry furniture whatever we could use this for Lockwood I don't care cuz I I know the stories will mix up I think there were some billabong stuff before we can use I am literally annoyed wait 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 this is threads let me just copy I'm just trying to get stuff so we can use what uh sodium oh wait we could use that costumes we could use furniture we could use this alright I should just copy the whole damn fold over my head is starting to hurt we'll use this actually I like that I like kind of the community oriented stuff cluster what cluster but I remember that damn stuff sidekicks oh we could use that oh we could use that we could do toggles I know they got some Lockwood stuff we could use billabong I'm actually just gonna make it easier I'm gonna toggle it side to side oh they got some stuff at a playground I think V me is another one but I'm not too sure alright we could use this for the Granzilla one this is so much stuff to look through I I think we're at a good pace right now I don't wanna hold it up too much longer the big poet person in the blue shop looks like Agus yeah alright so still alive I'm still trucking on um we're going to go when sort this out so estate screen where the hell's the states alright so how many screens this one or two okay we're gonna figure out this one so Okay, we're gonna figure out this one, so. We're gonna reload this space. Make sure I got my water with me. How long I've been live streaming? Only hour? Okay, so that's like a big picture that could be for estates. Let's see if we have like a bigger estates picture. Just wanna make sure. Alright, we're gonna go back to uh. Let me just close out some stuff because I don't wanna have. I need to find some stuff for. Wait, don't tell me I just exit out. I think I just exited out. Okay, real quick, I am gonna go back to my cache data and we're gonna try to find something for globals, but at least we know. That the gold watch, we can have that as just a placeholder, but we can like swap really quickly. And that's what I'm going to do. We're just gonna get something really quick on the screen. And uh, yeah, we're gonna do that. Alright, this looks good for a personal space. We could have that in there. And I just want another one, like another estate. I just need some, another estate. Oh, wait, wait, wait. I seen it. I literally seen it. I seen it with my good eye. My good eye. Alright, so uh. Oh, that's pretty good for furniture if they got like a main one. Cuz I'm trying to get wide images too, that's the thing. My aquarium? The hell is that? Is that like furniture? I don't know. Looks good. We're gonna keep it. Ooh, we got this one for sodium one. That's a good one. Oh, snap. Trying to find some. I literally seen one that was pretty good that we could add. This is so much like pictures to go through. Holy hell. Loot sports beach body. This is painful cuz I just seen it. Alright, this is going to take a long, not world map, but videos. Need to find something for estates. I can't, I still can't find anything. That's pretty good for furniture. The hell? It didn't copy. Alright, I could drag and drop. I forgot it's on my hard drive. I just need one poster. I don't know if this is just showing off like. Yo, Home had a lot of stuff. I need to find. Let me look back in the chat if somebody's asking questions. Hey, welcome back. Does this wipeout space currently have any videos recovered? Uh, no, it doesn't. I haven't worked on that. If you have it, I'm just, whatchamacallit? Yeah, there is quite a lot of images for sodium and this is just like one data. I'm looking at like just one amount of data. Bro, okay, that can go in. It's just. Hopefully, I'm not boring you guys with like just me trying to find stuff right now. Okay, this will work. This will work. Alright, I think I'm good for right now. Hopefully, I'm not like boring you guys since this is more of a like work oriented type of stream. And it's like, you know, not really for showcasing stuff, but uh, we're gonna get this done somewhat. Environment estates. Let's get a good one for estates. We just found. Whatever, we're gonna use this one. We're gonna use the Gran Zilla one. Trying to do like a two toggle thing. Save. Let's see if I had anything else for estates. Yeah, cuz this was talking about personal spaces, so we're gonna do that. I'm gonna try to get a two toggle thing on a screen so I could like alternate between them. Now, these two posters should be done for the most part. At least we got that done. I'm pretty sure I kinda need to wipe out, probably. I haven't uh tried it yet, Junes. Or looked into his data yet cuz if I try to download that joint right now, bro, my internet will be on fleek, like it will cap off. Alright, now we cooking. We cooking, so. I will check it later on after I stream though. After I get something to eat, I'll check it. But yeah, so that look, that's looking good. That looks good. Now, we're gonna go and check out the second screen. More, more than likely, the second screen is this space right here and um. We're going to uh. In the meantime, in the meantime, while I do this, I will have my avatar dancing in your face to no music. Alright, uh. We could do this one. Boop. Let me uh make sure I put a place marker to this and then we can uh. Alright, so let's see if that works. What? Maybe that won't work. I may have to reload twice because I left it out. Right now, what I'm doing, I am working on uh. I'm just working on Home and I'm trying to fix uh spaces like screen links and like videos and stuff. Oh, did I pass it? Hold on. I gotta make sure my stuff is straight. This source code looks mad different. Alright, so the store looks good. We have the states looking straight. I don't know if we have a second video. Can you PS or can PS3 install other OS? Yes, if you have a jailbroken console or a debug unit, you can use a, I think it's called Red Ribbon Linux. I'm not too sure. Um, if you look up Red Ribbon Linux, you can and you can install other OS on custom firmware. Or if you still happen to have like a PlayStation 3 that's under 3.55, then yeah. Alright, we're gonna do sidekicks cuz we, I'm gonna do that one. So, let's see. Sidekick screen, we could do one. Uh, I knew I have sidekick somewhere. Okay, don't tell me I didn't have it. Yo. Arrgh, I think I lost it. Why? Alright, forget that. We're going to uh. Here. We're gonna focus on the sodium screen. Then, we're just gonna take this and make sure I have dot DDS. We're gonna take this source screen. And we're gonna just verify that which screen is which, so you're gonna see sodium twice. Alright. We're reloading back to scene again. 2D image, actually, if. I think wipeout was cool, like some of the textures are like posted on the building. When you'll think PS3 modding will die? Never. I think PS3 personally will always last cuz there's still so much to do like. I work on PlayStation 3 like development and well, not really modding anymore, but more of the development side of things, but yeah. Alright. Alright, so that image does work, but that's just a placeholder. Alright, so we got sodium two. Um, that image kinda looks iffy, but whatever. I'll leave it there. I'm not too. If I gotta resize it, I could resize it, but uh, I really don't want to. So let's take a look at some more data. Ooh, we got some golf stuff we can add for women. Sodium. Damn it. I'm just trying to add. We need to find stuff for sidekicks. Alright, what I'm gonna do is just look for DDSs and I'm going to just streamline the. Rad pets. I'll just have that on the side. Companions will be in sidekicks. I literally have found some stuff for sidekicks and it's killing me that I just lost it. Furniture, that's pretty good. We could have. The hell? Supercars? Game cabinet will be in the game store. There's so much heavy ink stuff. Holy hell in this data. Oh, we could do these too. Dream yacht and dream island. Just trying to see something that like literally just says. I think I'm going a little crazy. We need to find, what is the exact name? Cuz I'm going a little bit crazy now. Sidekicks, sidekicks. See, it's kinda hard to try to find this information back online, thus I'm using this method and everything is not named in like the correct order, thus I have to like uh. Try to search for this a little manually and it's kinda sucks, to be honest, but it is what it is. But always the end result looks really good. Homegrown lab stuff. I literally just copied it and it's pissing me off that I lost it. Let me look back in the stream if anybody. Sodium 2? Maybe. Maybe it's for another space, but I'll just keep it for now as a placeholder or excuse me, a placeholder, or I'll just have it there because I, it's sodium related, at least. Yo, I can't believe I lost it, like the image. Hold on. I found the damn sidekick after all this time. You know what? We're gonna get to. Oh, there it go. Costumes. Alright, we found some stuff though. We did, so I'm kinda happy. Bomberman. Trying to do this as fast as possible too. Sidekicks. Mount Olympus. Alright, I'm just trying to have enough stuff, so oh, that looks cute, that one. Alright, we're getting to some good meat and potatoes of this damn data. I don't even think that was for that one. That was for something else. I just wanna make sure we have everything. All the activity boards and shit, or stuff, I should say. Oh yeah, that's this mass media stuff. We're gonna need that later. Hold on, this is some other mass media stuff. That's for like the second mall. Konami stuff, I'm not really worried about. Just trying to make sure we have enough. Like data we could work with. Alright, I think I'm done. I'm not gonna look at more images. The HDL la- image? Yeah. Alright, we're gonna go to the costume store. And find that one, so my boys Akumi still there? Hmm, where the hell is the costumes, states, exclusives? Costumes, I'm thinking of doing at least two. Let's find something that literally says costumes. Alright, there's 64 items we could work with now. Alright, we could do this one. I like that, so. And then we could add another line of code so we could have two screens displayed and toggled on. Um. Please, where is it located? We just need a second costume is all. Oh, there it go. I don't care if it's random. Alright, so. Zakumi's gonna go away for a second and then it should be working. Nintendo Ultra, Ultra 64 items? I need to get a Nintendo 64 again. I used to have one back in the day. Only had like Super Mario 64 in it. I need to get a Nintendo 64 again. I used to have one back in the day, only had like Super Mario 64 in it. Alrighty, so. Let's see what we're looking at. We got. Alright. Alright, so those posters are working. Furniture. Let's go ahead and fix that up, so we got our boys Akumi here, but he gotta go since he's my little placeholder, that's my best friend. My guy. Let's go ahead and make two source lines. I'm trying to get two sources for everything. If I have to cut back due to memory, which I have to check here, then um, I could do that. But the goal is to try to get the place all filled out. Alright, we got the bench swing. That looks good. And we could do the cucumber bed set. That looks good. Thank you guys for watching. Now the video folder also had, yeah, bro. The way how cache works, it's like videos are DDS files, I guess now. I don't know. Alright, so. That looks good. I think this is not loading. Not too sure if it's cuz of memory or it's just taking a little time. Sodium got that going on over there. Go watch. Hmm. What's the issue? Ah, I see it. I'm stupid. I had the old stuff, I didn't um, flip it over. Made a mistake. I had it, I had the stuff reading from a directory, but it wasn't located there, so. Home is gonna be like, what? I don't see that file, so I'm not loading it. That's what it is basically gonna do. Alright, so there it go. Furniture's working now. Let's do the uh, games. We're gonna do that one. Let's go and find uh, something for the games. Cluster, what? Cluster puck. I always liked the, the cluster puck video, back on home. Uh, cuz it was pretty funny to me. Games, games, games. That still has the source line for a online image. We could just do one actually cuz I'm trying to conserve some uh, memories, so we could do one. And actually, I'm gonna write this in my change logs, that I did this today. I did, I did like two things today. Fever Arena entrance. Added original slash custom content themed. Fever Arena space. Alright, so I'm just trying to keep a log of stuff where I'm working on because I'm, this is just for a new client and I like to uh, whatchamacallit. Alright, so. Costumes, I just gotta always make sure that each thing is fine, so. Alright, cluster puck is there, that's good. Sidekicks, we need to do that one. We could do one. I'm willing to give up some memory cuz I'm trying to get a video working on the screen later on. Thread screen. Sidekicks, we need to make sure that it's straight. Shred. Oh no, that's wrong. Oh no, I want the little cute one with the companions. That one was cute to me. I like that one. Alright, so that was that. Oh, I remember buying the cluster puck because of the costume. I'm surprised you don't, we don't even got that, really? Damn. I remember the commercial to cluster puck. Cluster, what? They were, they were really trying to, I think I have it. Oh! You know what? Bro, you know what Junas, you gave me an idea. Hold up, hold up, hold up. I'm going to do this. Cluster puck PlayStation home video. We're gonna get this video, I'm gonna put it above the damn game section. I'm gonna go to the sketchy ass website, which I've been using. Okay, so let me download this video. I'm like multitasking right now. Alright, sidekicks is good, we're gonna go to the thread shop. MP theories are mainly in object dynamics, but they do seem occasionally, yeah, I don't know, bro. Home would download anything from anywhere, basically. I am starving. Alright, so. I wanna actually get the video working now. MP3 poster videos. Where the hell's the video that go? Tutorial content. I'm gonna try to test it on this one. Images. Just for time constraints, uh. I'm gonna call it uh, Cluster MP4. May, I'm thinking it should be this one, bro. This should be it. Hopefully it is, I'm gonna be mad. Alright, we're just gonna copy and paste this in here. Let's see if the video loads though. Yeah, this is a pity, a pretty bad looking video, damn it. Alright, let me see what the livestream saying. Yeah, we don't even have the Atari stuff. Yeah, we are missing a lot of NA stuff. Bruh, I need P Vox monsters, I need somebody to get me. Ay, look, your boy did it. We got Cluster puck, the video, and we got that running in there. So I'm happy, so we got the video working. Alright, we gotta do threads now. Alright, so I'm assuming the second Jumbotron is going to uh, the other space. You know what? Let's test that now. I'm going to. I'm not gonna do that. I'm gonna see the second floor mall, since it's connected. I wanna see if the second video. Hey Nate, thanks for joining. Uh, EU stuff, we have, I said we have a lot of people, like a lot of the people from who donated data. It's from EU. We have more EU and US data more than anything. Okay, so my theory did work, so. We're gonna put a Konami video here. Uh, sorry for the random question. No worries, man. Haiti, thank you for joining. Uh, can you play PS2 games on Hen on a PS3 Super Slim? I tried to encrypt Half-Life with PS2 GUI and everything, but Half-Life won't launch. Um, yes you can is the simple answer. I do have a guide. If you look up like Nagato PlayStation 2 Hen, actually, I'll do this for you right now. Uh, I'll get back to my livestream real quick. PS2 Hen Nagato. This will work on every console. You could check out this video via right here, and then um, you can um, check that out. And then uh, whatchamacallit, everything is in there, but yeah, you can run Hen games on uh, Super Slim. You just, certain PlayStation 2 games are not compatible with Hen or just with the PlayStation in general, and there's a compatibility list you could look up. I tried out the home client and I went to the casino lobby and it glitched, and it was glitched out the colors. Really? Did you try via on RPC S3, my guy? If so, hit F5 and it should enable uh, MLA enable. But um. What I'm gonna do now is really quickly. I'm gonna go back out, since we're working on two malls at the same time, I don't wanna get it mixed up. I am gonna put a Konami penthouse uh, video. Above this one, and I have it in my old client, but I have to uh, remember where I had it located. I know I was doing it for um, the jet set apartment or a jet setter or private plane, so it's called private plane. Alright, I'm gonna go to my old client real quick. And we're going to uh, check that out. So. Private plane, private plane, environment. So many folders I gotta go through. It's like three, yeah, this is clocking at 301, my old build. Jesus. Jeebus. Private plane, private plane. Alright, so this Konami video right here, I know works with the client, so I'm gonna go back to the mall link. Konami, we're gonna switch this one to. Uh, let me just close out some of these. That's that. Screen links, that's that. Okay, so. Since we know the first one is for mall one, we're gonna switch this to mall two, and we're going to uh, switch this back, so. I just wanna make sure the Konami screen is working above the second mall, and then we're gonna go back to the first floor, finish the bottom. Hmm, maybe you had an issue with Protege Target Manager cuz I shouldn't, like all the textures I tested, it should work, that's weird. Yes, the probability, that's what was the object issue. Alright, so we got Konami penthouse running up on uh, like the little infomercial. That looks nice, right? Okay, let's. We're gonna go back to the first floor though, and we're gonna get that finished, and then we're gonna start on the second floor, since I know the screen links are working for the most part. Oh, you do, really? If you have a PlayStation 3, are you in the Discord, Nate? If you are, you can send me or at me, then yeah. Yeah, Junas, if you wanna help with that, go ahead. Yeah, cuz any data, like I said before, guys, will go back into the online and offline client. Uh, but. Let's go ahead and get shears corrected. Uh, let me see. Pop, pop, pop. Alright, so we got my boys Akumi here, he don't belong there no more though. Yo, where is the hairstyle? I feel like I'm playing myself right now. There it go. I know I wasn't going crazy, I'm like, I literally seen the hairstyles. I literally. I was like, bro, I know I didn't lost that cuz I remember seeing some funky hairs they had. Star Wars, I think I seen it. The Discord? Um, yeah, give me a second, I'll send you the official Discord here. It should be in About Me, but you could come to here. I think we do in somebody's cache. This is the Discord and you could join from here. I have to um. If you come in at Discord. Alright, so the sheer stuff is working. If my data has the sodium talapads, would they work? Um, yes and a no statement. If they have like decrypted Lua scripts, then yeah, that would be fine. Hold on, I'm just trying to read real quick. Um, hold on. I'm still here, guys. I just was reading my Discord for a second and I had to turn off the screen cuz I got some personal messy uses. Make sure it's off cuz I don't want that jump popping up. Alright, so, um. I may do a two toggle screen on sodium after it's done, uh, but we got shears done right now. We looking good, we got sidekicks good. And we need to do uh, the thread store. We got four pictures we gotta do, so we could toggle or whatever. Alright, so. We're going to. Alright, we're gonna. Alright, so we gotta focus on screen two, and we're gonna get a. Uh, where is it? Alright, I'm trying to do like two guys and two girls, so. I'm trying to get like two guy posters and two girl posters, just so it's equal. Alright, so that was one poster. That was for the girl. We got the plaid shirts for the men. We can add that uh, to the screen, I don't know, that one. And we need one more girl clothes. Alright, that looks good. I don't care if they random, as long as it's filled. Alright, that worked out, and we should come back and everything should be fine. Threads used to be a cool throw, I used to buy a lot of stuff from there. They used to have like the Fever Arena jackets, uh, Loco Roco, they had like a lot of Sony stuff. Alright, so as you can see. Alright, so as you can see. We got the Adidas plaid shirt on the wall. Woman, woman. Alright, so that looks good. Everything's starting to look more alive and I like that. Now what we gotta do is uh Gold Watch. I know. Oh, we gotta do these posters. Darn. One, two. So it's a flip flop situation? Let's do the testing. We're gonna do some testing. We're gonna maybe, god, that is a lot of stuff, so. We gotta find which poster it is real quick though. Alright, boom. So that's the first poster. We could just add random stuff to here though. Like, I'm just, we can add like regular home stuff. That's what I'm gonna do. We're gonna keep doing that and I'm going to uh, yeah. We could just do regular home advertisements. Oh, I do like this one. I like the activity. Okay, so these two is gonna be flip flop. I'm gonna have. One right here. Actually, we're gonna test this. MPT. I don't know if it's gonna like the second line of code right here. Is it gonna affect the backend of this? I'm thinking it's not. But we're we're gonna see. Um, maybe. Di- did you find it, Kyle? If you find that poster, send it to me in a Discord and I'll download it and we could replace it. Ah, so each screen is a double board. Wait, actually no then. This board is not even like that. I think this screen like it's separate though. Alright, we're gonna do the other one then. Ah, we could do something sodium related. We could put it, we could use it next to the sodium bench if you want. Like uh. I just like this one here kinda has that community feel to it, but right here we could do something sodium related. So we can leave that for sodium. This is probably a three and four. I, did I pull out anything sodium like double RP, whatever, whatever? I'm not too sure. I mean, wait. Hold on. I'm trying to understand what you're saying. Some bonus XP maybe. Just trying to think real quick. Since this is doing like furniture and states, maybe we should put something right there. Er, hold on. Alright, so maybe this is not that poster. I'm just uh. It's maybe number seven then, if it's wrapping around. We wanted to test that theory real quick. I don't think I want like a furniture. I want like one furniture poster and I think I wanna state post. Cuz I think if they're doing it that way, it's like one, two, it's like the first one we did with the community stuff. Yeah, that's what I thought. Alright, so. Alright, that line of code is not gonna work cuz it's missing its like low ink point. Alright. It's coming along. We're we're cooking. Alright. That should be five and six. We should do something maybe thread related and maybe exclusives. Cuz I just wanna like, maybe cuz it's next to stuff. Alright, so. Alright, uh. Then maybe it. Thank you guys for still watching or if you, you know, still here then, that's what's up. Alright, that's pretty cool. Now, um, number five has to be the other one, so we're gonna try to get something for threads. I don't think I used all the third ones. Animated hoodies. I don't think I did that one. Alright, so I'm almost done. Oh, not save as. I just wanna save. Alright, so. I'm getting so confused right now. Alright, yeah, that's working. I'm over here daydreaming. Okay, so we're gonna add this to the last two, the furniture and yeah. Wait, what? I'm actually getting confused. Oh, okay. Never mind. I see what I did. I'm like, why do I see that there? So we got furniture and then uh. We need a space. I already used the um. Island bungalow place, so I don't think we could do that one. I'm trying to see if there's. That is. We could do Dream Island then. Alright. Think after this, we'll be done with the first floor and um I may be calling it a wrap real quick. Or maybe this livestream a wrap and I'll do another one maybe very soon and we'll work on second floor. Cuz I'm getting hungry, but uh, let's see. Sodium looks good. We got that. Boom, that looks nice. Yeah, this looks good. Cluster Puck, we got the companions. Uh, you know, the thread store got its stuff. Nothing's having memory issues right now, which is good. So yeah. I think this is good to go. We did get like a head start on a mall too. And um, we could start probably our next livestream. Maybe, I'm not too sure tomorrow. Or anything. It's depending on how I feel. Or maybe it's actually Saturday. I could do a livestream and we could work more on this. But um, yeah, this is the end of my livestream. I hope you guys did enjoy it. Thank you guys for staying even with all the. Implications in terms of my uh internet. But with that being said, my name is Nagato. Thank you once again, you guys, for all the support and love y'all gave me. Uh, you know, just in general for my channel, I recently hit ten K. Uh, but yeah, I'll see you guys next time. Take care.